Oh, we probably got confused because it's Tuesday. Oh, you're knocking on the door yesterday.
Call the meeting to order at Montcom County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for Tuesday, May 27th will begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman Peterson.
Today, we have Pastor John McCumber from Entrickin Bible Church to lead us in prayer, please.
Father, we thank you for today. We thank you, Lord, for this meeting, Lord. I just pray that you would just be with everything that takes place today. I pray that you would be with those who are making decisions, Lord. I just pray that you would just give them wisdom and guidance, Lord. I just ask that you would be with each one today. Just pray that there be unity in all of the decisions that are made. Lord, we do thank you for those that you have placed in office to oversee the business of our communities and of our county. And, Lord, we just commit this meeting to you now. We ask this in your name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Paul.
Alexander.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Painter.
Yes, ma'am.
Har.
Here.
Har.
Yes.
And Marie.
And we have a quorum. Everyone have a copy of tonight's agenda? I don't have any changes. Does anyone else? Oh, I do, too. I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Number, I'd like to add number four under new business. Drain Commissioner. There's a request. And then after that, I don't have any other changes. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Fisher Johnston.
I would move to approve our agenda as amended.
Support. Been moved and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. Excuse me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Everyone have a copy of the meeting minutes, last meeting, May 12th, 2025?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnston.
I've moved to approve our minutes from the May 12th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes of the last meeting, May 12th, 2025, as presented. Discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Public comments. Anyone with a public comment, if you'd step up to the microphone and give your name and address, and we've got three minutes reserved per comment.
I have some handouts. Could I approach?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm J L from Greenville, Michigan. First of all, I would like to thank my commissioners for the hard work you do. Especially appreciate the past few years when the county was facing the insolvency and the hard decisions you made to bring it back to the balanced budget we have today. I know that was a lot of hard work and hard decisions, so gotta give credit where credit's due, so. I would now like to draw your attention to the Montcom County Parks Ordinance, which is currently not being enforced. I brought this to your attention by email a week or two ago, and I'd like to bring it to your attention again, so you can take action on this issue. In reading the ordinance, it's obvious that it was written to protect the peaceful enjoyment of anyone who uses our county parks. It is well-written and deserves your enforcement, so everyone can enjoy the parks without infringing on the residential neighbors that surround the park. Currently, you have McCarthy Park rented on June 28th. There's advertising activities that are prohibited by your park ordinance. These park ordinances were specifically banned solicitation, commercial activities, advertising, sales in our parks, all which the group intends to do. The group is actively advertising that they will have vendors and seeking out additional ones. The ordinance also bans speeches, performances, amplified voices and music, all which the group is advertising they intend to do. I have highlighted those on your handout. The citizen group I represent asks that you rescind the rental of the entire park on June 28th. The park ordinance gives you the power to do so. Our group also asked the commissioners to strengthen the park ordinance by no longer renting the entire park to any one group or entity. This is labeled as a public park. It cannot be labeled as a public park if you exclude the public, your taxpayers, who support it from entering the park. A public park should never be closed to taxpayers. If a large outside group wants to rent an area, there are many commercial venues that they can do so without using our parks. The group that is renting the park on June 25th, 28th, is now actively advertising to attract a large group of people. Currently, over 700 people have expressed an interest in coming to this event at McCarthy Park. The park is located in a residential area. It does not need more traffic or noise in that area. The park bathrooms are not adequate for those size groups. The park land is not zoned commercial for commercial activity. The park's capacity is insufficient for hundreds of people or hundreds of cars. Over a half-century ago, our forefathers set aside this land for the peaceful enjoyment of families and small groups to relax by the Flat River. We ask that you continue our forefather's vision by enforcing the county park's ordinance as written and then strengthen it so no, so the ordinance, so that the park cannot be rented exclusively, banning taxpayers from access. Our forefathers never envisioned the park to be closed to the public. Let's take back their vision and keep the park open to everyone at no cost, no commercial activity, no performances, no advertising, no leasing, no ticket sales. I look forward to your immediate action on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Any other public comments?
Is the rest of you agreeable with that?
My name is Bob Goodenough. I'm also one of the area residents. Matter of fact, I have lived in Sidney Township and Montcom Township most of my life. And so grateful for these commissioners and the work that you do. I think in a very real sense, there's been oversight here, and I don't know where the, where it lays, where it needs to be changed, except that when a park such as McCarthy Park becomes available to an exclusive group and everyone else is banned from it, just, there's something about that as a community member that just doesn't sound right. I'll tell you how valuable County Parks has been to me and my family. Number one, when I was a kid, we would drive from here up north, and whenever we would go past a small county park, we would look for a place to pull over, take a little rest, have a hobo lunch, if you've ever heard of one of those before, just some cheese, crackers and bologna. And that was not necessarily a highlight of our trip, but it was part of what we enjoyed. This park not only belongs to Montcom County and to the residents of Montcom County, but we make it available for whoever seen, who is traveling by, for a place to rest, use a restroom, those kinds of things. It seems that if we're opening it up to large groups, there are places, venues, such as the 4H fairgrounds, where they can do the things that they're advertising they want to do. And those kinds of things really don't have a place at McCarthy Park. One of the interesting things, I drove through the park this morning, and I'll conclude with this. It's a small venue, and, and the places there are dispersed. We, there are three pavilions, but there's three pavilions for a reason, so that three different groups could be used in that same park at the same time. And the reason I say that is because they are dispersed. There's one on the north side, one on the west side, and one on the south side. There are also about 15 to 20, maybe 25 picnic tables, but they're not all together. They're spread throughout the park, giving people, many groups, opportunities to come and participate in that. We have, as a family, we live just three, four doors down. We could actually probably throw a stone and throw it right into the park. And, but we have on just an adventure said to our grandkids, let's go to the park and play on the swings. Or let's go to the park and we're gonna have a birthday cake for one of our kids or one of our grandkids. We have walked through the park, enjoyed the quiet walk along the river, and we like to keep it that way. Nothing against large groups, except they interfere with the neighborhood. And unless there's a limit on the number that can rent a park such as this and numbers, that would be my suggestion, limit the, the large groups. Don't allow them to do the things that they're suggesting they're going to do. Enforce the current policies and regulations you have for parks and keep it what is, was intended for from the very beginning. I've always said that to have good neighbors, you must be a good neighbor. That's my philosophy in life. And I've tried to be a good neighbor to those that I've lived next to all my life, and that generally works. But the parks are a special neighbor to all of us. And if they're used in the way it's being suggested, I believe that it won't be a good neighbor for us, and it'll create more problems. And I personally think, this is my opinion, I think you're headed down the wrong road. Because when this thing takes off, I don't see any limits on it. So limit the number of people who can rent it. Limit the number of sizes of the groups. Keep it small, because that's what it was intended for. If it continues, there's, I don't see any limits on how often this park can be rented out, as it is right now in your current application. We could have large groups in there, week after week after week after week. Those that are willing to pay. And so I say, limit the numbers, limit the size, and keep it what it was intended for in the first place. A small place for neighbors, county members, and people driving by. We need a place to rest, catch a breath, and then travel on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment?
Doctor, excuse me, I'm not really any big speaker or eloquent. What I can tell you that I've had.
Sir, go ahead, get your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Randy Waffle. I'm Spencer Row.
Thank you.
And I've had three daughters we've raised. They, they were actually able to go to the park themselves a lot of times, as they got older, you know, in their teens and stuff. Hey, let's go to the park. And we've also have five grandkids, and they enjoy going to the park as well. I think that they do need to keep it where it's just family-oriented. And without, like the guy said, without a big groups and stuff like that, I don't know. By renting it out as well, and I know they're trying to make money as well, but the taxpayers do pay for this as well, right? I mean, that's where the money comes from for the parks, majority of it, I'm assuming. And it doesn't?
No.
Where does the money come from then?
The rental fees.
Huh?
The rental fees.
The rental fee?
Exclusively?
Exclusively.
Exclusively? Our taxes don't overpay?
Let those go. Continue.
So I, I think that that should be addressed somehow, as far as may, if we're not aware of that. I guess it's hard to explain, but there's a lot of miscommunication, you know what I'm saying? If, if we're not, if we're saying that we're not actually paying for the parks and stuff like that, so. But that's all I had. I had nothing major, but.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Colleen Smith, 744 South Greenville, right next to the park. You guys just approved and put in a frisbee golf course over there, and it's within 10 feet of our property design. There's no fence. We put up private property signs, no trespassing signs. And occasionally, a frisbee comes into our property, and they're gonna come over to get it on our property. So what is gonna happen when this place gets rented out all the time and you have frisbee golf people coming up there thinking they're gonna be able to have their frisbee golf little tournament, private little party with their frisbee golf, and it's closed because of this kind of event? You're also opening yourselves up to, they're, they're charging the vendors that they want to come in. So they're gonna make money on our county park, which is not right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? If there's no other public comments, we'll move to our first agenda item, 410. We have a public hearing for brownfield redevelopment in the Village of Lakeview. Intertain a motion to go into a close. So moved. It's been moved and supported to open a public hearing for the purpose of discussing a brownfield residential redevelopment project at 9640 North Greenville Road in the Village of Lakeview. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're in a public hearing for the purpose of discussing this redevelopment in the Village of Lakeview. We have the village manager and a couple of colleagues of his that you guys are welcome to come up here and, and give us the Reader's Digest version of this.
Well, either way, we'll take either one.
We're not limited in time, so what's the matter?
Right.
Right.
Because of that.
Yeah.
That's fine. I can. Welcome. Well, thanks for having us. First off, the Was Trailer Park Behind Leffink's Food Center in Lakeview, the venue, just for those that aren't familiar. Ultimately, our goal here is to change that from a planned unit development to a site condo project. And by using the Brownfield Housing Authority capture that's available now, it actually makes the project feasible. The important thing, I guess, to look at, and one of the goals of the village is one of the big pieces that will happen with this is all the said properties in there will be owned. And so they will all come on the tax roll as individual homes or properties that are owned by the owner. Some will be rented in part of the plan to get things started, but long-term, all of those properties will then be on the tax roll as an individual property versus being a planned unit development. Long-term, this is good for the village in property tax revenue that will be brought in. And so ultimately, the village council something I've tried to get to happen for multiple years with this piece of property, but long and the short, Redstone has changed their vision for the property, which aligns with this model. And our council is completely on board with this, with this process. So with that, Brian from Redstone, if you want to make a few comments.
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Taren. That was very well put. I'll try to be concise, because I contend to go on about what I like about this. My name is Brian Papke from Redstone Group, representing. And as Darren mentioned, I think in conjunction with trying to decide how to move forward with this project that Redstone has owned for a few years now, it is a mobile home park, a licensed mobile home park. And I think in conjunction with trying to figure out how to get this developed, really trying to come up with a lot of ideas how we can create kind of our ideal community here, the one that everybody would want to be in, and that we can justify some significant funds. We, we approached Darren with the idea of this brownfield TIF program that's available for affordable housing, which Jared can maybe explain a little bit briefly. But in short, it enables us to basically transform what is a mobile home park into a regular site condominium subdivision. And basically, we're using the same kind of lot layouts and utilities already built to create a community where we'll have increasing property values, because we're gonna be building houses with permanent foundations. People can get conventional financing. And they'll have attached garages, and they'll be every part of, you know, what a normal site condominium project would be. And I think for us, that's a win-win. We're kind of building what, what the majority of people want in terms of detached homes with garages in a community. And utilizing these TIF funds, it enables us to put down a significant downstroke in terms of the infrastructure, parks, trees, landscaping, improvements to the site features. So there's really, it's a win-win for us. You know, and essentially, Jared can explain it better, but we're, we're creating each one of these as a tax lot, paying taxes on it, and then getting a slow kind of trickle reimbursement over time from the property taxes. But so, yeah, we're very excited about the project. We have a, the homes designed for it that I think will fit very well up there. And I think, you know, this brownfield enables us to move forward and move forward quickly. You know, I think so. In short, I don't know. Jared, you?
Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Jared Lutz. I'm with Michigan Growth Advisors. I've been working with Brian and his team to work on a couple of these projects and draft these plans. This being one of them. So a question that came up in the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board meeting two weeks ago that real quick, I wanted to address for some background here. So Public Act 381 is, is the enabling statute here, the Brownfield Redevelopment Act. And in 2023, the, the state of Michigan, they, well, in, in 2021, the state of Michigan went through and said, you know, what is the housing gap? What's the demand for housing across the state? And that number came back with 115,000 new residential units are needed across the state. And the state wanted to find a tool to help spur some of that development. And so they amended in 2023 the Brownfield Redevelopment Act, which was historically used for historic properties and contaminated properties. And now housing property is an eligible property under that program. So we, we keep talking about the word brownfield plan or brownfield here. This property isn't a brownfield in the, you know, the intuitive sense that it's contaminated. It's, it's just the qualifying trigger for this plan. So big picture here. You know, I believe Montcom County, your housing needs assessment identified a gap of almost 1,700 new residential units, and there's a pretty even split between rental units and for sale units needed in the county. In this census tract in particular, there's, population went up over the last five years while housing units went down. And so this project is going to deliver 104 new housing units. There will be a mix of renter units and owner occupied units, similar to what the, the housing needs assessment identified. So if there's any questions related to the plan, I'm kind of in the weeds on the, the model, the numbers, the text, so I can answer any questions that you may have, but for now, I will press pause.
Anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Commissioner Johnston.
I think you stated there would be 20 parcels in there?
135-ish.
Right now?
Yep.
And, and it's gonna turn into how many actual parcels?
Same.
Right now, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I quit, so there was a mobile home park that was designed with quite large parcels. Some mobile park, home parks are very small, kind of crammed in.
Okay, that, that's what.
This is, this was not designed that way 20 years ago. It's 60-foot wide lots on average. So it's, it's almost aligned pretty well with even what a conventional house would be on these days.
So our normal minimum is 66 feet wide, where this is six feet shy of that. So realistically, it's not significant.
So can you talk about what the reason that the commissioners have to approve this is because of some taxes that'll not go to Montcom County? Talk about what that means or what that, what that is?
Yeah. So the, kind of the approval process here, you know, we've, we've been working with Brian and his team on, on bill, pulling this plan together that's in front of you today. That plan was approved by the Village of Lakeview. It was then seen by Montcom County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And then now we are here in front of you today for final approval of the local piece of this. And then it'll go to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for state approval. So the, the local process authorizes local tax capture. So what we're talking about here is the, the taxable value on the property as it exists today does not change. Those taxes are continued to be paid and distributed to taxing jurisdictions. The increment, so once you build a home and taxes go up, that, that delta, that increment in taxes is captured by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and then goes to reimburse the developer for eligible activities. Those eligible activities are, as Brian mentioned, you know, redoing the roads in there, you know, expanding some of the infrastructure, the sewer, the water pipes, those kind of activities. So what is captured is, is all millages aside from debt millages and special assessments. I don't believe there's any special assessments on this property, but there is a school debt millage for sure, and that will be paid like normal for the duration of the plan.
And the library.
Library debt, yes, yes. There's a library debt as well that will be paid as normal and not captured.
So it's a little bit counterintuitive, because we're creating these lots and paying the taxes on them after we create them, but then capturing that back over a period of time. But so basically, we're paying ourselves. We, we would have to pay the property taxes anyway, and we're still doing so. But then you get back under the program, you get an increment back over time. So I guess I'd like to point out that we're not asking for any money. We're just asking for the increment of our own taxes paid back to us, I guess, essentially, which is why we like this program. And it's.
For a term.
For a certain term.
And then, and then once that expires, then all of those taxes.
What is, what is the term? I know I saw it on here, but I.
It's 28 years.
28 years, yes, correct. So the, the taxable that's there right now remains there.
Correct.
And what we give up for 28 years is the new tax, the new tax.
Portion of that new tax.
Portion, just a portion of it?
My understanding.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And what is the plan with the existing homes there? Isn't there like nine?
I didn't hear you.
Yep, yep.
The plan for the existing homes, the nine?
Those are all going to stay there.
Just staying right where they are.
Move them all to one section.
Gotcha.
And then as they age out, then they can be replaced with the same type of housing that.
They'll be put onto lots, just like they, I mean, they're sitting there today, then, now they'll be in an actual tax lot going forward.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
And you guys will build all of those and then either sell them or rent them?
Yes.
How many will you build? Speculate, I mean.
Quite a few. So we're trying to figure that out. I think we're gonna start right off with like two or three, but that's kind of like our test models. And then our intention is to build 20 to 30 a year. And I think we're gonna build that whether or not they sell or rent. So basically, we put a finance program together for about 50 to start. So I think that the goal is, you know, part of the beauty of this Act 381 is that we're incentivized to move forward, because then we can capture the taxes, you know, and so I think the incentive is to not make a lot of money in every house. The incentive is to build the project, you know. So it's, it's a kind of a beautiful thing. So we, in order to do that, a lot of times what happens in real estate is you build a few units and you sell, kind of sell slowly for three or four, five, six years, and then towards the end, you start going faster once you get a bunch of homes in there, and it starts to have a feel, and the street trees are improved, and so what we want to do is. And so what we want to do is put air on the rental at the beginning. We're going to put lots of homes in, control exactly what they look like, and build, I would say at least 20 or 30 of them right off the start, mostly rental. If we get sales, we'll sell them as well too. But I think we want to create this critical kind of mass in there that has a feel to it, which will make us move faster and benefits everybody. So I think that's the reason where we want more sales initially, no, I'm sorry, more rental initially, to get that horsepower and get that project feel going.
And can you explain the affordable housing gap? Is that just a cap on the part, some of the rentals or?
Yeah, great, great question. So as a part of the, we talked about eligible activities, you know, roads, pipes, infrastructure. Another eligible activity is saying, you know, we're going to income restrict some of these units to households making less than 120% of their immediate income. The rents are also going to be charged below that rate as well. I believe, yeah, the rents for those income restricted units is estimated to be about $1,600 for a two-bed and 17 for a three-bed for those income restricted units. And the gap is functionally saying, you know, there's a reimbursement for the difference between, you know, essentially what a control rent is and what that project rent is for a duration of maintaining those income restricted units. So the developer is going to be required to submit back to the BRA and MISTDA that, you know, their rents are in line with affordable rents and that their tenants are making under that threshold to deliver unit, those affordable units.
So it's kind of like a combination. It's not a all, before it's like a combination market rate and affordability, affordable project, which is, you know, as part of getting those, the TIF funds is that, you know, a lot of what's needed is that workforce housing. So they want to keep a percentage of it in those workforce ranges. So I think that's, the goal is to provide a certain amount of those and then let the market rate be whatever they can be, but not to let people go crazy and start building $300,000 homes. We still have to keep a portion down in that affordability range to get these funds, basically.
And I think the intent here with the program is, you know, nobody is going to know whether, you know, Joe Schmo is, you know, is an income restricted household because they're going to be interspersed between market rate. You know, we're not, it's not a Section 8 development that, you know, stands alone and it's in its corner. This is really integrating the income restricted units and households along with the market rate households.
So you're saying $1,600 a month for a two-bedroom and 1,700 for a three-bedroom, correct?
Approximately.
How many units, how many units total are going to go in there?
135.
135.
135 is the overall number.
Okay. So just some, just some quick math. If you build 135 two-bedroom units at, say, $1,600 a month, just quick math, that's almost 2.6 million a year that you're going to make in just rent. Why do you need the tax incentives?
Is that as much as it is? Let's see, I don't know.
They're going to be able to afford to build it.
For the construction.
Understand that, but at 2.6 a year, I would think you could recoup your investment pretty quick without tax money.
If the homes, our goal is part of this, and we're working on similar projects, our goal is really figure out where our break even is and just be just above that. So that's basically what this is. The TIF is what.
So you're a nonprofit?
No, but the TIF is what enables us and our investors to get the income stream. Normally, a project like this, you have to build it and make a pretty big margin and live with that going forward, based on your costs. And in this case, we can, we can keep those numbers down. That's part of the idea that works so well that the state came up with is that we're incentivized to get it built, get it done, and keep it very affordable because the incentive for us is that 28-year passive income stream down the road. The incentive is not to make big money right off the bat. The incentive is that passive stream that we recoup our funds down the road because to build the house for, I forget, our current projections are $170,000 a year plus or minus, not per year, $170,000, and then to rent it for 1,600 is below margins. If that, normal margins is what we'd normally do. We would, to normally, you know, a market rate, we would build a unit for 170,000, we'd probably charge $2,100 a month for that, just normal margins. So I think with this TIF program, we don't have to do that.
So how long would it take you to build 135 units?
Oh, I don't know. It depends on the market, how fast we can do that. But I think, I guess.
Ballpark.
Our, I think our skill, Redstone, my skill, is to build a nice community with great architecture and lush, you know, a really nice community feel. If we can do that, then it'll be faster. But I'm saying we're going to start off with probably 20 right off the bat and see how fast we can fill them. We fill them, we'll build another 20 as fast as we can. So, because our goal is to really ultimately generate a critical mass that will have a feel to the project that will make people want to be there so we can build even faster. So I think, you know, our projections are 20 to 30 a year right now. So four to five-year project, something like that.
Four to five years, and this is for, this, this brownfield would be for 28 years.
Right. So we have a, let's call it a five-year buildup from today to get.
So you'd be, you'd be getting, you'd be basically paying yourself back for 25 years, 24 years.
Well, so the, you know, what's being reimbursed here are the, you know, the site preparation costs and infrastructure costs that are incurred in over those five-year period.
To the tune of how much a year?
Every year, it's a buildup too. You only get reimbursed for what you spend.
Right.
So if we, if we built the first 20 houses, we're only going to get captured 20 minutes' worth of, worth of home taxes, really. So once we build 135, then we'll get the whole amount, but we're only getting, we're only getting as much as of the houses we have built, you know? So basically, if we build five, we only get five houses' worth of reimbursement as a percentage of this overall package, I guess you'd say.
Yeah. So upon stabilization, once the project is fully built out, the total tax available for reimbursement is about $500,000 a year. And that, so again, that, what's eligible to be reimbursed are the costs that they incurred through the development period. And then, you know, they're going to go and submit a packet of reimbursement requests that shows, you know, how much did that road cost? How much did that pipe cost? You know, here's my certified payment application and proof of payment. And then they're going to have essentially an outstanding balance that the BRA with the dollars they've captured are able to kind of pay down that balance. And they can only be reimbursed to the extent that there is a balance there to be reimbursed. So there is a, you know, a schedule right now that shows 28 years. You know, if it only cost $800,000 to build that pipe, but we're showing right now a million dollars, that payment is going to happen much faster.
So what we're, what we're looking at today is the maximum it ever could be. Like it will come in less than that. I mean, the actuality of it, like, you know, if our site cost is four million versus five, then we'll only get reimbursed for the four. I guess you, I've seen it work in different places in different states, but here it's, you only get reimbursed for what you have actually paid and have receipts for, right?
So essentially, at the end of the day, you're, you're building all this, getting reimbursed from it, getting reimbursed for it from tax money and still making 2.6 million a year, just on the low end.
That's the, if that's the.
If I'm wrong, feel free to tell me so.
That's the revenue coming in.
Seems like this is, this is kind of where this is headed, I guess.
But I guess what I was saying before is that that's below market margins in terms of what, you know, if you would build, usually it's a factor of at least one. So if you build something for 200,000, usually it's 1% of that per month, per year. I guess my dad taught me this a long time ago.
Yeah.
This is less than our, our cost would be in an average market.
Yeah, I haven't, you know, built the pro forma on this one. They, they obviously have their financial models, but right, you know, when you're collecting $1,700 in rent, there is also, you know, utility fees and maintenance fees and operational costs associated with being able to rent out those units. So, you know, $1,700 a month isn't profit, so to speak.
Does this include utilities?
For the income, for the income restricted units, I believe it does, but there will be others that are market rate.
Okay.
And, you know, then that also doesn't include the cost of debt that the developer's going to incur to build this project, right? So there's a, there's a reimbursement stream coming in over time, but, you know, if I'm a financial lender, you know, I'm going to take a look at that as a, you know, net present value of that revenue stream and then loan at 80 cents on the dollar to that. And that's how these projects are really being financed in the backend. They have to go secure a fair amount of debt to go build these 135 homes. And that's going to be a massive expense moving forward that they need to pay down in order to achieve these, these rents.
If you look at the overall number, that's, you mentioned 135 houses built. If our average cost is about 170,000, that's $23 million worth of debt, which is a big, a big bill.
Right, but in 10 years, you'll be, you'll be paid back for it.
Depending on the interest rate and stuff and the cost of the site development too. So it's probably more like 30 million by the time site development plus utilities, interest. Yeah, I think it's.
I won't take up any more of your time. I just, this whole brownfield thing kind of, I don't understand it, so I just want to ask questions. So thank you.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple other things.
Sure.
One, village is certainly looking at the end game, the long game here. We certainly have a housing crisis in our county, the state throughout, Lakeview specifically. We've been losing skilled laborers at our school, Parker Hanifin, Steeplechase, just outside of our jurisdiction, because these people are commuting. And so they commute, they spend an hour on the front of their shift, an hour on the back, and then they move away. They take a job somewhere where they don't have to commute because there's no, there's no housing here, period, let alone affordable housing. So that is a real big issue that we're looking at and facing. The other, the other thing that is important to our council, myself, and talking to the superintendent of the schools, is, is losing kids out of our district. By creating another 135 family homes in our community, we're going to boost numbers into our school district, which is important. If there's no kids, there's no money. The school right now gets about $1,000 a kid towards their budget. With no kids, they get no money. So do the math on that. If you figure you have, you know, half these units have kids in them, even one, that's another $9,000 to our school district for that pupil. And keeping these skilled teachers there that we're not cutting. So this is, that's another component that the village is very concerned about, is our local school district, which is all inside our jurisdiction, unlike a lot of other municipalities in the county. So, but the big picture here is nobody wants to build in Moncom County. Nobody's coming here. And so for a small municipality to get a bite at the fruit is huge. We're not Greenville, right? So, I mean, if you're going to get the most bang for your buck and the people with, where the most congregated money is, it's Greenville. Look, that, where all the other developments going on in our entire county is around Greenville. And so for us to be fortunate enough to get somebody that's interested in doing something real in our small town, we are extremely excited for it and hope that you'll give this serious consideration tonight.
Just to piggyback what you said, Darren, I think, you know, Redstone has owned this for a few years and really kind of been in a loss at what to do, I guess. When the idea came forward of potentially converting these all into lots and, and working with Joe and Jared over here, with the availability of this Act 381, it enabled us to do the project, in short. We cannot do it without it. Basically, you know, to figure out, there's been a lot of mental kind of back and forth on what to do with this project, how to move forward. But without this and our investors, with the income stream that comes with these Act 381s, it brings investors out of the woodwork because there's a passive income stream that comes with their initial investment that they can count on. If we build a unit, we get X dollars. That brings investors in because that's what they want. They need that stream of kind of sure thing coming in. So that's really, that's the beauty of this program and enables us to move forward and move forward quickly.
If you covered this already and I missed it, I apologize. At the end of the project, what percentage would you guys estimate or maybe already know would be rentals compared to owned?
You know, it's hard to, we guessed high on the rentals because I think what the, what has seen, what we've seen out there is there's whatever 10 or 11 homes out there and there was, they've been offered for land lease to people, you know, in a mobile home park, and everybody's wanted to opt so far for rental, and nobody's wanted to invest in there. Everybody's wanting to rent so far. So we're saying, well, maybe that's, based on that history, we're seeing that maybe there's a, right off the bat anyway, there'll be an initial surge to want to rent. I think once we get 20 in there, people will want to start buying more, which is what we want, because we can get our money back, you know, so we don't have to have $30 million in debt. So ideally, I'm saying there's a potential here that we may be a lot of rental, as much as half or more. I'm, you know, but I'm thinking that maybe it may not be once we build enough, I guess in short, so.
What sort of rules would be in place, I guess, to assure that it stays nice and new and is going to be a place where someone wants to build a home?
Yep, no, I'd love to address that. I think that's what's exciting about this because we're basically converting this into any community that you see, it's a site condominium. We'll control all the common elements, you know, we'll control all the park system, the roads, the, you know, we're even going to provide irrigation in the roads, street trees, we're paying for all that as part of the development. And it gets maintained to a certain standard. We're not, we're not asking homeowners to mow their own grass. We mow the grass from the road to the unit. I think there'll be some, some consideration whether or not we give people their own little area and their own yards if they own the, in the house, but for the rentals, we take care of it 100%. For the ownership, we take care of the areas that are public facing, I guess I would say. So we're trying to figure out what the blend is, but in short, this gives us an excuse to just control it. You know, we can basically handle 100% because we're interested in keeping this, these intersections and these roads like beautiful because that just helps move our sales. So, you know, basically it'll be a full, almost condominium ownership where they pay into association, or we pay into our own association because we're renting them. And we have a budget for snow plowing, grass cutting, irrigation, maintenance, all that stuff.
Do the renters pay to the association on top of the rental?
So not, and the renters would pay whatever their fee is, but the, but the homeowners would have to pay into an association. Yep.
So the, you know, project rent, when we, again, we talked about the income restricted units, that dollar figure is set at MISTDA and is inclusive of all housing costs, costs associated with housing. So that's your utility allowance, your actual rent, any HOA fees. So, you know, the, you can't exceed MISTDA's control or MISTDA's rent limit for all housing, which includes those three items.
And so even the other, the market rate ones, we're going to keep it down to whatever those reasonable rents, but, yep, you know, the goal is to get people in there and to fill and build homes and create the community. And HOA fee is always a big part of what the people consider when they're trying to decide how they can afford it or not, so we're incentivized to keep that down.
Anyone else? Mr. Chair? Yeah, go ahead. So Greenville can get that amount for some of the apartments and things, but Greenville's quickly become a bedroom community for Grand Rapids. Where do you, where are the people going to come to Lakeview? I mean, I'm kind of, I'm from most, you know, there, went to high school there, but Christian Carr, he grew up there. I don't know too many people that can pay $1,600 a month for a two-bedroom apartment.
They are not.
And they probably need, are they?
They are now.
Are they paying $1,000 for a rental house in town?
Our current rents in there average about 1,600 to 1,700, but I think the difference is, is.
You know what I'm saying, Darren.
They're, they're apartments, but they're, they're more like homes. You know what I'm saying? I think for any standard apartment building, kind of an older project or like, you know, hallway apartment building, that is definitely true. You know, I think there's no way we could charge $1,600 for a hallway serviced apartment rental building, but when it, it's almost like renting your own house on your own lot, it kind of changes that a little bit.
Well, I love the idea.
These people will have their own two-car catch garage, 60-foot by 100-some-foot lot for 1,600 a month. That seems, when you compare it, what the house costs, I guess, versus apartments, I guess that's how I've had to think about it too, because I know that's a little bit.
I'll give you that.
High, yep.
And we do have some apartments that are paying 1,400 downtown above that are new. I know, I never thought. They're new. I know, I never thought I'd see it either, but that's realities. And that's, that's the point. There's nowhere for them to live, so they pay it.
Anyone else? Is there, remind the audience, we're currently in a public hearing to discuss this. Is there anyone in the audience that has any? Comments on this project?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Support, it's been moved and supported to close the public hearing discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I didn't see any proposed resolution. Did I overlook it or are we just? Making our own, taking our own action? The action required would just be for the board commissioners to approve the. Brownfield redevelopment request from the Village of Lakeview?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alexander.
Uh, I'd move to approve the Brownfield redevelopment plan located at ninety-six forty North Greenville Road in the Village of Lakeview.
Support, it's been moved and supported to approve the Brownfield redevelopment plan request before us. Located at ninety-four sixty North Greenville Road in the Village of Lakeview. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, our four twenty-five, we have the animal control director to discuss a request to use the pandemic readiness bill. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Earlier this year, you guys had approved a community spay neuter grant, uh, for us, for community members to spay neuter their pets. Um. Thank you. Yes.
I'll take some too.
Really? Um, the grant was a reimbursement, uh, grant for the county, so, um, we're paying the initial, but. We will be getting it back, so it won't cost us anything in the long run. Um, we were looking to use some of the space at the pandemic readiness building. Um, for some licensed veterinarians to come in, perform the spay neuter surgeries. Um, specifically, we were looking to partner with, uh, Mercy Veterinary Coalition. Um, to come in and perform the surgeries. Um, when I originally started planning it, um, I'd reach out to another department to look at using some of the space out there. Um, as our shelter is tiny and we just don't have a whole lot of space there. Um, I was under the original impression that I was okay to proceed without coming to you guys, hence why I'm just now coming. Um, we did originally do, um, two events. One was just, um, today. Um, after Brenda and Pat had gave us the clearance to proceed with today, which I do appreciate. Um, so I was looking to, um. Continue using some of the space out there. We have ten other dates scheduled, tentatively now through the end of August. Um, for the grant.
Okay. Questions, comments?
In the second page of her, after her agenda request, that. Agreement has been altered a little bit and that revised copy is on your desk. I highlighted on the second page of it what was changed. Which is that two hundred dollars that requested that.
It for a travel fee, which was going to come out of my budget.
Out of your donation fund?
Yep, the donation line.
Just a one-time two hundred dollar per day?
Yes.
Yeah, per event.
Each event, but not per animal, per day?
No, just for the day itself.
And that's not new, I mean, you knew that was coming.
It, they had mentioned it before and then I. Altered it.
Yeah. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? So these are, this is all the result of that, of that grant that. We approved some time ago for you.
Yeah, earlier this year.
So the only real question here is that we've got everything doc, or we've got an agreement.
I got an agreement and then I did get a copy of their liability insurance as well that I got from Brenda.
And then just the use of the building, which is. I guess consistent with what we've been doing.
Just covering our liability.
The blood drive uses it.
They use it for Cinco de Mayo parties. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'm moved to approve Moncom County Animal Shelter's use of the pandemic readiness building. For the purpose of spay neuter clinics, clinics and allow for appropriate signatures.
Support. Been moved and supported to allow animal control to use the pandemic readiness building for the purpose of. Uh, free spay neuter clinics held in the county. Discussion. On the, as far as the permission for the dates, do you have those ten dates already in mind or you need?
I had tentatively set them already with them or scheduled them. I just don't know them offhand. I know they're Tuesdays now through like the end of August. I can get them if you need them.
Allow her to coordinate with Eric as far as those dates, or does she need to? Have some other permit, anyone other than Eric or Todd or whoever is in that building? She's using EMS space, so.
Eric did say they were available when I had checked with him, if that helps.
Do you know if he noted those anywhere? So we don't have conflicts with blood drives or anything?
I don't know if he noted them anywhere, but I had emailed them onto him.
Or Todd or Mike or whoever owns the space over there.
Yeah.
I, do I need to amend it to say?
I just wanted to be clear that we knew what the plan that. She had, you know.
I think as long as she clears it with Eric and Eric can clear a couple of ambulances out.
Well, any one like small area, nothing too much.
And prob, and it probably goes further for less confusion if he knows those dates sooner than later.
He already has them, yes.
So, good. Anything else, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Up next is correspondence for this evening. Vice Chairman Peterson, please.
Alright, uh, if you go to page ninety-one, it'll be our first item. Up, um, from the controller, it's an ordinance to repeal the Moncom County Parks Ordinance. It's for our consideration. Um, Brenda, do you have anything to talk about on this?
I will just say that, um, our parks commission was dissolved. I believe it was eight or nine years ago by the previous controller. And at that time, this should have taken place. We didn't realize. It didn't until it was brought to our attention by Mr. Hudson, that we had an ordinance out there. Um, so I guess it's just basically a housekeeping, kind of like we did with the dog, dog ordinance two years ago. That didn't get repealed when we went through that process several years ago. Um. Whether you do this tonight or not is. No skin off my nose, but it does need to be done at some point in time. We have not utilized this ordinance since, since two thousand seventeen. So we simply go by our parks rules.
The history of it was put into place to apply for a state grant for parks.
Yep, yeah, we had to have it for that, yes.
And to the best of our knowledge, has never been used or enforced, was put in only for that purpose.
Right. I don't know if we ever did get any grant funding for parks.
But we ne, we never, we never enforced the, the.
No.
Ordinance for any reason.
Nope.
So I guess I'm just looking for a little bit of feedback from the board. Um, obviously there's no attention around this, uh, parks ordinance. Um, it's pretty, pretty low, uh, priority. But, um, if you do look through the ordinance, there is, um, there is obviously some glaring. Uh, inefficiencies. I know in one spot it says no person shall, um. And I'm, I'm loosely quoting, you know, no person shall, uh, create. A sermon, uh, spectacle, something that gathers more than ten people. Any open house, wedding, anything like that is going to do that. Um, there's no, no speakers, no sound that's, uh, to be amplified. I would assume wedding receptions probably have that. Um. I, I, I just don't know what, what we want to do here. Um. I understand the, the groups, uh. The groups wanting us to enforce these ordinances. One of my biggest questions is how? I don't know how we even enforce these. Are we gonna ask our sheriff to be there to enforce? Any of these ordinances, um, are, are we gonna go down there? I, I guess I don't, I'm, I'm lost on that part of it. Um. I, I don't know, I don't know what to do here as far as. Do we repeal or don't? Well, the timing couldn't be worse. Um. But what, uh, what does everybody think, I guess? I think when, when we were, um, when we were. Made aware of all of this, uh, that's been talked about tonight as far as park rentals, complete park rentals. Um, we were kind of under the guise of, uh. A frisbee golf tournament and we, I, I think at that time we kind of said. Let's try this for a year and see how it goes, um, see if there's any bumps in the road. Obviously there's not, it's a airtight plan. But, um, I think we're kind of at a, a sticky point as far as. If we just repeal this ordinance now, I think that's not the way to do it. I think if we stop somebody that's already made plans and. Put forth a lot of effort, I don't think that's the way to do it. Um. This would be a step in the direction of. Allowing, uh, allowing all this to happen. I think there could be, um, revisions made. To our complete park rental policy before any of this takes place. Maybe we just say. We can't close the park. I don't. Uh, again, I drove by McCarthy Park yesterday. Once at eleven and once at two, and you could have shot a cannon through there and not hit a person.
Yep, me too.
So, I understand, um. But I understand why this is an issue. I don't understand. If it would be an, an issue if it was any other event. That's my problem.
I think that's irrelevant as to if it would be an issue. I think the. Issue is the things that they brought forward, their concerns, are they legitimate? And I think they bring forth some extremely legitimate concerns about parking, about the number of people. About the loud noise, about, um, toilets, and so whether or not this is being brought because. They don't like the event, I mean, to me it's meaningless, because the fact is their concerns are, are relevant. And so I think we need to at least. Address our concerns. Um, I got, I have a lot of questions. Uh, first question would be, I don't understand why we would necessarily need to get rid of the ordinance. Just because the group, the parks group went away. Because the ordinance still seems like there are rules that, that are good, that, that we should be following. Uh, they don't allow demonstrations. It does limit the number of people, which ten is too small, we know that. Um, but it does address many things that should be addressed with our county parks. Um, each one of our county parks are different, and so I don't think it makes sense necessarily to, to just. Only have just the, the county parks. I think we need to have something encompassing of what we will allow and what we will not allow. Um, but I certainly don't think that getting rid of an ordinance that has a lot of very relevant and good things in it, just because there's a few. Bad things. Um, I also, I mean, I have an issue with this event when reading it, talking about drag shows. I mean, I do not believe. That this board intended. For us to allow groups in that are going to be doing drag shows. That, that's not family friendly. That is not something that. The majority of this county, I believe, believes we should be allowing to take place, uh. Um, adding meat. And so, um. Not only am I not for this event, based on what I'm seeing here. Um, I don't think it makes any sense. I mean, the, the, the idea that we're going to eliminate an ordinance. So these people can have this event. Doesn't, it seems to deny rationale to me. And so I, to me, it seems like we would, let, take a look at this ordinance. We would tweak it, work with our local law enforcement, see if they will, will enforce it. Uh, i- i- and continue to have an ordinance. And that, that's just what seems to make the most sense to me.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chair. I guess.
I'm next, I guess.
You're next. My, uh, my thought comes down to enforcement as well. Like Adam said, I'm not sure who we have enforcing this and. If we didn't just adopt this rental policy that we did, what if they decided to have this event anyways? And didn't pay for the rental fee? What do we? How do you enforce that? I mean.
As long as there's one taxpaying citizen from Moncom County at this event. There's no way we can say no. We can vastly limit what they can do.
And, and who does that?
We do have an ordinance, I mean, and we have other ordinances.
Okay, so that, that's fine. If we're going to do that, then every wedding reception, every, everything from here on out in McCarthy Park. Till we get that ordinance figured out, we have to have somebody patrol. I, I mean, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
And Brenda, isn't there rules at all the different parks? They all have kind of different rules? So that's kind of what the point of repealing this is, is that we go by the parks rules.
What do the painter?
Go ahead.
What does, I mean, where are the McCarthy Park rules? I mean, do we have them? So we know what we're even doing? Thank you. My concern is a, a repealing this, then you have nothing to go by. There's lots of good things in here. But a lot, it's all reactionary. If you do this, we'll do that. So I'm, I'm kind of concerned that they're going to come in and it's going to be a ask for forgiveness rather than permission. I mean, with the vendors, which is clear violation, there's going to be, I mean, it's looking like it's going to be a huge deal. That's, that's how you need to do it. You need to say, listen, or intended to have vendors.
So what's?
Or do this, or do that.
What is the difference if we, we don't repeal the ordinance that we haven't used in twenty years? We've only gone by our parks rules, or we repeal the ordinance and go by our parks rules? That's my question. I mean, yeah, the timing and the optics of it isn't great. I get that. I'm only doing this out of housekeeping purposes.
Because the park rules are not sufficient. They don't address parking. They don't address number of people. They don't, uh, address demonstrations.
None of that has ever been enforced.
Well, it should be.
Didn't we run it to the Democratic Party a couple of years ago?
If, if we're not enforcing it, that's our bad. Doesn't mean we just don't enforce anything. I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
How do we enforce it?
The same way we enforce every ordinance on the books.
We're responsible for the five hundred dollar violation too. The person who pulls the permit? Or rents it? An organization?
Yeah, if they, I mean, if they violate an ordinance or violate one of our rules, it's a five hundred dollar fine.
Back up to the day that we granted permission for them to do that, the discussion was we rent Camp Ford Lincoln. And so maybe if Frisbee Golf wants to rent it for an, an event for a day, we had a wedding. That wanted to rent it exclusively for the day, and we had said, we don't know what this is going to look like going forward. This is going to be our. Test. We'll know a lot more about it after this season. Maybe we figure out after this year, we don't want to rent it again. But right now, we've given permission to two or three groups to rent that for the year, based on. The fact that we rented Schmied Park for all these years. Um, and we wouldn't have. If this group rented Schmied Park for a week, what would we have been doing out there? We don't have any, any rules in place that say they can't have a, you're offended by the drag show.
Yeah, I am.
What if they, some, uh, this group rented Schmied Park and had a drag show? Who is gonna, who is gonna change that?
Well, we have a county ordinance.
That says what?
This has no demonstrations. I mean. my, if people are going to, to break our rules, they're gonna break ordinances, and we don't have much to enforce, so be it, that's on them. But for us to condone it, to condone the violation of our ordinances, that's on us.
So being in the spot that we're in right now, what do you suggest we do?
I think we leave the ordinance the way it is. I think we work to change the ordinance to make it more, uh, up to date. And I think that this group doesn't get to hold their event because they're in violation of our ordinance. Not to mention, we're supposed to be good neighbors. We have four, four different families here who are neighbors to that park coming to us and saying, you're not being a good neighbor because you're allowing a big party to take place in our backyard. And it does seem to be that it's gotten a, a lot bigger than I think we anticipated.
You have two direct neighbors.
We don't, there's four home, there's four people, four different couples here.
66,000 people in this county.
We don't know.
Across the street from, from McCarthy.
There's only one of them here that's across the street.
We don't know any of this. We didn't ask for any criteria from this event, from this group. They asked to rent it and we said yes. We don't know what they're, this is all based on Facebook or whatever they're posting. They didn't come to us and say, we're gonna hold this, this, and this, and we're condoning it. We rented them the park, same as we rent Ford Lincoln, without any criteria, what they're gonna do. So now, because they've posted and, and we're gonna tell them, timeout, we're not gonna rent it to you now because now we don't like what you're doing there?
They rented our facility.
With the intention of?
With the intent of holding an event that breaks ordinances. We didn't know that. I had no idea they were gonna break ordnance.
Did you know we had an ordinance?
Absolutely not.
So how could you vote to let them do that? And didn't even know that they're breaking? How, how could they be responsible to know our ordinance when you voted to let them do it? You didn't even know it. That's what my problem with this is.
Because I'm not hosting the event. If I was hosting the event, I would look into the rules of the, the county.
But if you're agreeing to let them hold the event, you don't need to know those rules of the county?
Well, I think the event has changed.
So the disc golf tournament that's coming in.
How do you know it changed? They didn't give us anything when they asked to rent it. They just said, we're ABC, we wanna rent it. We said yes. And then now you're saying they needed to know the rules. How come we didn't need to know the rules and say, timeout? This doesn't, I mean, we're guilty, we're wrong. You, you, not them. If, if this violates our rules, we should've said no. It's not on them. They came and said, can we rent your place? And we said, yeah, have at it.
So we, we're gonna cancel the disc golf too?
Of not knowing our own ordinances, then.
It's a, it's an ordinance that's on the books that we thought was gone. It was never enforced at any of the parks. It was put in place to apply for grants, and we thought it got repealed when the parks ordinance, or the parks commission, uh, was decommissioned.
I think we should at least take a look at the McCarthy Parks rules and see if they're not in violation of that.
What's, what, take a look at what, McCarthy Parks?
Well, I mean, we've got McCarthy Park rules.
Okay. Let me pull them up here really quick.
But isn't, it, isn't that kinda late to lunch? We said yes, rent our park, and now we wanna say, wait a minute. Um, you're violating our McCarthy Park rules, we're gonna say no?
When it comes to, when it comes to safety, I, I don't think it's too late. When, that, that park is not adequately equipped to hold a group that size.
We weren't making any, we weren't making any guarantees or, or claiming it to be anything. They know what that is, they came and said, we wanna rent that park. We weren't claiming that it could hold 300 cars or 7,000 people. That's on them to decide whether they can get every, they rented it. I don't think we're obligated to, to do the math for them on whether it's enough square footage for their event.
Well, I think we should ask the questions.
So McCarthy Park rules, just looking over them really quick. The only rule that I see is violated would be loud, disturbing, and annoying noise or music is prohibited. Camping also is not allowed. Also firearms. Uh, pets must be kept on leash, picnic tables returned to their original arrangement. Fires are allowed, but only in designated areas. Motor vehicles must operate at no more than 15 miles an hour. All terrain vehicles and recreation vehicles are not allowed to be operated at the park, except for where specifically designated, I don't know if there is. Please beware, new disc golf course throughout the park. McCarthy Park is open daily from sunrise to sundown. Uh, all refuse to be placed in refuse containers. Destruction or disruption of wildlife or plant life is prohibited. Um, large pavilion offers electric at the east end of the pavilion with ground fault circuit interruptors. Um, just push, uh, it's, uh, large pavilion lights will only operate at dark. Turn off switches near electric panel when leaving. Please bring your copy of the rules. And that is it.
So yes, I'm staying, this board made a mistake. This board did not ask the proper questions before they approved a rental. We now know the details of this event and can go back. And we have a, we have a, uh, an ordinance that would allow us to enforce our ordinance to prevent an event that is not adequate for this park, to, to prevent it. And, and, and we should, it's the right thing to do.
Okay, so who's gonna enforce that ordinance?
Sheriff's office.
Okay.
Yep, they don't, they don't.
So.
But doesn't, but that doesn't take away our responsibility to do, well, that's right. I mean, our job is not.
What's right to you isn't right to everyone.
Our job is not enforcement.
You're telling us that we need to enforce this.
What's that?
You're telling us that we need to enforce this, we need to uphold this. Our job isn't enforcement, who's gonna enforce it?
The sheriff's office.
Okay. What are they gonna cite?
They're gonna cite that ordinance.
Okay, and slap them with a $500 fine?
Possibly.
Are they gonna shut the whole thing down?
Don't know.
Okay. So all of this is based on what ifs and maybes. What if this is 15 people?
Could be.
I don't know what it's gonna be. I don't have any clue. I don't think personally that we need to be anywhere's near excluding anyone from anything. This is taxpayer funded, I get that, this is taxpayer funded. There's gonna be taxpayers there. How are they not allowed to use it? I understand that there is a lot of stuff in here that kinda has gone a little off the rails that we didn't expect. But I'm not saying we need to just absolutely stop this whole thing. We need to at least address this with the organizers of this event and say, hey, is there any way we can work together to get this where we need to be? Now, hey, you're gonna violate our ordinances, you're out. I think that is extremely obtuse way of thinking.
I would be in favor of working with the organizers. I'm, I'm, I'm not looking to exclude this event based on the event itself. I am looking to exclude this event because A, we have an ordinance, they, they appear to be violating potentially. Two, because loud music is also violated. Three, because I don't think the drag shows be, should be taking place in county parks. And so if, if we can work with them and we can alleviate some of those concerns, then I have no issue with it.
So the drag shows, loud music.
Parking. Bathroom facilities, I mean, it's just, I mean, they've got, I mean, if they, if they truly have 800 people going, which we know isn't probably going to be all of those folks. But 800 going, it could be more, a lot more. Because even if half of them show up, if they got two or three friends.
I, I think the main, eh, safety is obviously the main concern here. I think the main concern needs to be that we need to be any, at least accommodating. We need to work with these people and say, what can we do to work with you to make this so everybody's comfortable with it? I know there's gonna be people that aren't comfortable with it, no matter what. But unfortunately, in today's world, you don't get what you want all the time. Where's gotta be some sort of compromise here. I think we can work with these people and say, listen, the drag show has gotta go. It's, it's just too, it's too polarizing in, in today's world. I understand that people don't wanna bring their families there, fine. I don't understand how you just don't bring your families there. 364 days is the rest of your, whatever. But, okay, that's gotta go. And we say in our, in our policy, the entire park can be rented, but not closed. I don't know why that's such a big issue. It literally says in this, in this flyer, everybody on and off of Facebook, everybody's welcome. So it's not closed. We're not gonna have armed guards at the gate saying, now, you're not on the list, get out of here. I mean, i- it's just a fallacy to think, oh yeah, there's gonna, nobody can go in, everybody can go in. Might not like what you see in there, but the same thing going in the museum when they have the body exhibit. That's gross. Not, uh, the event's not gross, the body exhibit is gross. But I'm just saying, I think that there's too many extremes here, we need to at least find a middle ground. I'm happy to work with the organizers of the event, I'll even wear this jacket if I have to.
I feel like we reversed roles here, like now you're the middle ground guy?
I know. Hey. I'm just saying, I, I know what you're saying, I know what these people are saying, I, I understand all of it. I'm just trying to, to keep the peace. I live up around there, drag shows aren't my thing.
What's the date of the event again?
28th of next month. We have two meetings in between.
If, uh, if, if you, if we work with them and they just outright aren't gonna go along with the rules, that gives us grounds and it's documentation to maybe pull it.
Yeah, and I don't.
If, if, I'm sure they probably work with us.
I'm sure. I, I would think so. But, I mean, are the sticking points, food vendors, are they bathrooms? I mean.
Any vendors. I would like to get some assurance that they're going to be cognizant of the value. Um, you know, just to be polite to the neighbors. Um, you know, I, I do, I mean, there, I mean, I have other concerns as far as parking, um.
Well, I've cited Burley Park, cause I was there yesterday, and you wanna talk about a nightmare. There's cars lined up miles down 46. I get it, but it's, you know, with events, it just happens. There was a car show at Macon Township. Parking was terrible.
But it's private property.
So do you wanna have Commissioner Peterson and Commissioner Maher and the controller try and work with the organizers of this event or the people that rented the park and see if there's some?
But where do you draw the line? I mean, do you do this for every rental? Do we do this for the wedding and make sure they, we agree with everything that goes on at the wedding? Or, you know, I just, and it's not only that, this ordinance is also for all of our other county parks. So what do we do at Ford Lincoln and all the other ones? I mean, I don't think it's that simple.
I don't think it's that simple either, but it, this is a, this is a, a, a temporary fix to a very current problem.
I would agree. This event is unlike other events. And so there's no reason that they're not treated different. And, and it seems to be a lot bigger. I mean, you guys keep using examples that are not apples to apples. I mean, the, the events that normally take place at these parks are small. I mean, even the weddings, I mean, nobody's holding a, a 300, 400 person wedding at McCarthy Park. I mean, you're talking 30, 40, 50, maybe 100 people, not potentially thousands of people.
Whoa.
You, there could be 100 people that show up to this event too, that's, we don't know. 700 interested people on Facebook.
Doesn't say anything.
No.
I, I'm for reaching out to them, trying to work something out. Documenting everywhere we go, it could be that simple. The.
But that doesn't.
And if they're gonna go in there and not be loud and not do this and not do that, not bring vendors.
Is it from 1 to 7?
I understand the neighbors might not like it, but they're citizens.
I mean, I, I still go back to the disc golf thing. I think that's gonna be a major event as well. They're gonna have, have speakers to, to talk to disc golfers, I mean.
Are they gonna be having karaoke?
Oh, I don't know what they do at disc golf tournaments.
Constant loud music.
Well, that's, that's assuming that they have speakers that can blast music, you know, who knows? I don't, I have a karaoke speaker at my house, it's this big, I can barely hear it. Johnson definitely can't hear it.
Painter can't either.
Huh? See? I don't know, I, I'm more than willing to work and, and, you know, within the next month, figure out what we can do to make everybody happier. I know it's not gonna work, but I'm, I'm more than willing to, to reach out and try and figure out what we can do to make this more palatable for everyone. Um, but again, I, I think there's gotta be some sort of middle ground here. We're not all gonna agree, we're never going to, that's just the way it is.
I agree with Commissioner Alexander, I don't know where you draw the line.
I think you do.
Some of the things that have been talked about is the drag show and parking, and then the vendors, can't have. And so we get a committee together and go meet with them. What are we gonna tell, what are we gonna tell them is acceptable? It doesn't sound like you like anything on here that they're doing. The vendors is wrong, the number of people's wrong, the drag show's wrong, loud music. I don't know, I don't know what would be the, what would be the outcome of this meeting, except to tell them to come and sit, sit quiet in rows and then go home at seven o'clock and don't bring too many people, I don't know.
Well, can we just, can we at least try it?
Kicked it around, I think we've discussed every angle of this. I think we need some kind of motion to move us in a direction, so. What's your pleasure?
Well, I'm a glutton for punishment, so I will move that a committee made up of myself, Commissioner Maher, and our controller Brenda meet with the organizers of this event before our next meeting and discuss options moving forward.
You available this week, Glenn?
I am.
You available this week? So I'm on vacation next week.
Is there support to that motion?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Alexander?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
Painter?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes ma'am.
Carr?
No.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
I'll go into the more exciting stuff, uh, with your correspondence, the warrant reports.
What are you doing with the ordinance thing? We have to just table that? Can we table that?
Do we want, do we need to table that?
Can we just table that?
I would for now, I think.
Okay.
Do you want a motion though to table it? Back to the next meeting?
Not the next one, I won't be here.
Well, we can, we, we can still discuss it.
I think we need to do it quickly if it's something we're gonna do.
Don't necessarily have to table it, we can place it on file and bring it back up another.
Revisit it later in the year.
Okay, I would move to place the ordinance to repeal the Macon County Parks ordinance on file.
Support. It's been moved and supported to place the ordinance to repeal the county parks ordinance on file, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, now I will get to the warrant report. If you look in your package, I believe it starts on?
94.
94. So if nobody has any questions, comments, or concerns on the warrant reports, I will um, read them off right now. Warrant report number 05152025, the amount of $599,054.2. Uh, warrant report 05222025, and the amount of $317,550.71. And finally, warrant report 05272025, and the amount of $358,091.62 for a grand total of $1,274,696.35. If there's nothing on that, I would move to approve those warrant reports and allow the appropriate signatures.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve the three warrant reports and obtain the appropriate. It's been moved and supported to approve the three warrant reports and obtain the appropriate signatures totaling $1,274,696.35. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Um, items five through 13, does anybody have any questions on those? If not, I would move to place items five through 13 of the consent agenda on file.
Or? It's been moved and supported to place items five through 13 of the consent agenda on file, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Last two are just, uh, for your information about the Kinder Morgan Pipeline Awareness Program and the Veterans Affairs Advisory Board minutes. If nobody has anything on those, that will be your board correspondence for Tuesday, May 27.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Peterson.
You.
Up next is committee reports, we don't have anything. After that is new business, item one clerk correspondence. Item two, controller correspondence.
Couple of things, um, just wanted to make sure you saw that budget development schedule and note those dates in July that we'll be meeting. And remind you to bring back your budget books, so I can refill them next month. So, Nate, you won't have one. Charlie's got one laying here on his desk, so I got Scott's and Charlie's, but if everyone else could bring theirs back so I can refill them, that would be great. The last little tidbit of information I thought you'd find amusing. Remember when we got pushed into naming or voting on a name for that Schitt's Creek or New Costa Creek?
Would they name it?
I got noticed the other day that they rejected both of them because there was opposition to both of them. So, the office thought, well, maybe we should submit a, a, a naming request of Montuago because it goes through Macon and New Wego County.
Who thought we should?
The girls in the office.
Oh.
Montuago.
I think mount, yeah.
It's already called.
Are they looking for options again?
I don't know if they are.
It wouldn't hurt to do that.
But yeah, I, I found that amusing that they forced us to make a vote on it. And there was already opposition, opposition to both of them before that. Like, ease, ease. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, up next is chair board correspondence, I don't have anything, does anyone else on the board? Okay, now, item number four is the drain commissioner, he's with us patiently.
You guys are tough actors, follow.
Yeah, all the fun you can take in a day.
It's why I don't come very often. I can't handle that much fun. Uh, I'll make it real quick. You guys probably remember here last year, um, through the solar projects that were built down to Evergreen Township, Blumer Township. Through part of that project, there was conversation about all of the gravel from the laydown areas to kinda be left available for the various entities, the townships, road commissions, drain districts, that kinda stuff. DT has graciously offered all of that material free of charge. The entities only have to cover the cost of the trucking. So, I spoke with Doug, I, I spoke with just some of the different, uh, you know, people in the county to try to get an idea of what, what would our needs be, you know? And I, little more than needing to go and fix a couple potholes, I, I kind of encouraged him to be, be thinking about a product that you're able to buy for maybe $5 to $8 a ton delivered here to a location that would cost you $30 a ton plus trucking whenever you want it. The road commission was trying to take opportunity to get about 10,000 plus tons. They were gonna go so far as use it right down on some of the roads, they're still hemming and hawing whether that's gonna work out if they find the right places for it. I think as of right now, they're safe bet is they're gonna use it for things that they can cover up with asphalt, shoulder gravel, items like that. All back behind the pandemic building, I have to chuckle cuz who would've known that this thing would become such a popular venue? We're gonna have to start having a rental agreement for it here pretty soon.
Too soon.
But I would like to be able to, I'd like to be able to extend the parking lot in the back to be able to house more of our pipe materials and storage, right now that area gets a little bit wet and saturated and when we drive back there to pick up stuff, we run it all up, difficult for maintenance to mow it, it's just kind of a problematic. While at the same time, I'm working on a project with the White Pine Library to add on their parking lot and just so happens through this conversation with Mark Saban, I, this comes across my desk at the same time and I felt like here's an opportunity, they, they didn't really have enough funds to kinda make it go around, there were looks from costing ideas, this falls in my lap. So, I'm working to try to commandeer some product to set there for them as well. So, really why I'm coming here today is I don't have anything really totally earmarked, but I want the county to take the opportunity to purchase and buy some of the material to set there. You know, whether Doug from maintenance needs the stuff, whether, you know, we extend that parking lot, the White Pine Library is gonna pick up the cost for theirs, they just don't have, they're not far enough along for that. You know, the gun range gets the driver resurfaced, a- any of these numerous opportunities, it's a ready and available product that we have. So, I, I would like for an opportunity for us to be able to take advantage of this when we can get it over the next couple of weeks. It's, that's the worst part is it's on short order, when they're hauling it out, we have to take it, whether we have a spot ready for it. So, my hope was that I would quick actively strip the topsoil and build a parking lot for us to put that material in and then stockpile the remainder on top of it till we had the needs for it in the area, so.
Todd spoke with me last week, I had four different late board meetings in the last 10 days and, and we talked about it briefly at the end of one of those. And I don't know if he, he was clear, everybody picked up, he doesn't really have the money for, you know, a particular drain, he can't assess it to the drain. So, he's looking for us to maybe front some of that money to acquire that and then whoever's the beneficiary in the county.
See, what we would do as far as, you know, in the drain office, if we had a pile out there that the county had pre-bought, let's say we needed a few dump truck loads because we crossed the county road or we, we worked on some residential driveways. Right now, we just go to the aggregate pit, we pick it up, we pay the cost of it, you know, just that simple. We work it through the road commission. This would be just as simple as purchasing it here, crediting it back to county for the money that they had. Then we have an actual drainage district that is paying for it, we have a mechanism for that. But to buy, you know, 1,200 or 1,500 tons to set there, whose money do I spend and how long does it set there waiting? You know, when really this is more about an opportunity for the county to use it.
But it's, it's just such a good deal on the product that he kinda hates to just let it.
What's the price tag for all this?
Well, it's, it's, you're paying trucking. So, right now, the road commission is hauling the product off of, down on 57 from there, they're taking it up to Fish Creek. They're paying about $8 a ton for trucking. So, that's a pretty good reasonable ballpark for us. If I wait and I don't get the product for another couple of weeks and I get it off the one at Sydney, or I'm sorry, over to Condenser Road, maybe we'll get it for a few dollars less.
I think he's like, how many dollars are you looking total?
So, what I did is I ran the math between what I would need to extend our parking lot and, and cover the costs or cover enough material for the library's parking lot, 2,500 tons would take care of that. So, that's around, you know, about $25,000 budget would give us a little surplus. That only just covers those two areas. So, if somebody wanted to do something at the gun range, if you decided you wanted to add stuff to a disc golf park, whatever ideas that you had for county maintenance long term, you know, had this come across my desk a few months earlier, I would've been passing it on to the city of Stanton and say, hey, you just built a nice addition here on Veterans Park. You, you got low-grade gravel product and you have a product here that you can buy for pennies on the dollar, I would've pushed them in that direction. I just hate to see, I hate to see 60,000 tons of high-quality aggregate that's given to the county and to the entities just get absorbed so that a bunch of other trucking contractors can pick it up and take it for free and resell it back to us when we need it.
My thought when I, when Todd and I were talking was that $50,000 worth wouldn't be out of line. We spend, you know, Doug had a bid here the other day, 50 for, what, painting the three pods in the jail or it seemed like it was something after that, what was Doug's latest that we spent money on?
Roofing?
No, that was way more than 50. That's what I mean, we.
Yeah, what's the painting?
And the only thing I want.
Spend money on those projects, this is one of those that's certainly gonna come around, we're gonna need the, gonna need the aggregate at some point and then do we pay the 30-plus trucking? Or we, or we got a pile of it here that we stockpiled for?
And the only thing I do wanna preface is that, you know, obviously, there's a flip side of this. It doesn't do any good to buy every pit you can get your hand on to set it in location that then is not cost-effective to get it where you need it, right? But if the product is purchased by the county, there's a great relationship between the road commission and some different entities. So, this is available for you to get at your convenience. I would hate to see us get none, but I don't know that purchasing 20,000 tons is a worthwhile use of the money because it's gonna be set here. You know, I would, I wouldn't wanna see you purchase more than what.
How much, if you pick, could pick and know, how much would you wanna get from us?
I think 20, I think 2,500 tons would cover what we need, but I wish I had more time to vet, like, who's got some great ideas? You know, the stuff that crosses my mind is you, you wanna, you know, you wanna go over to McCarthy Park just cuz it's on, you wanna put all-new gravel in there? This is the kinda things that you want it for. I just don't have that time to, to have these products.
Double what you want is a shot in the dark or do you?
I would say that would be a not to exceed amount, and I mean, that would be $50,000 just if I took the $8 a ton that they're paying. And the hard part is, is I could say that's all the more I can think of, but between now and next week, a few people could call, I can, you know, maybe Doug, anybody, you guys could have harebrained ideas and we'd say, hey, that's a good idea, we could really take advantage of that, so.
Did, did you say it's crushed concrete?
It's actually crushed limestone.
Okay, so there's no rebar, no, nothing in it?
Nothing, the only crummy spot was a location where, um, the road commission, debatable whether it should've had rebar or not, but they had like a little crushing operation set up where they ground up all their pallets and their metal packing and stuff. So, I think it's not gonna be, it's gonna be something you're gonna wanna watch, you know, I, it's supposed to be all crushed limestone and very, very clean, we both know that that process is not always fail-safe.
Yep.
Where are we supposed to pull this money from, general fund?
I know that we've got different sources, I thought we'd ask the controller for what her thoughts on the capital improvement, public, what's the?
Capital improvement comes from the general fund, there's that public improvement fund.
Improvement fund, we got some extra marijuana money, we haven't completely earmarked, so, whatever.
And I would say if you were gonna make a, a motion today, I would just set like a, a not to exceed dollar amount so that we can just, we can build what we want, we can truck what we can, we'll see what we have for pace. If we have some ideas that come to us over the next few weeks, maybe we can earmark a little bit more, but I just, I hate to, I hate to overspeak how much you could get, you know, I just would not wanna commit to a dollar amount and then have a humongous pile out there that never gets used because the ideas don't come.
Look, Tommy Clerk had a question.
Would it expand the parking back behind for early voting? Parking was a big issue for us out there last year.
We absolutely can, yeah. I mean, I removed that baseball diamond and all the stuff back there and that's what my plan is to extend that. But again, the extension of that is tied to how much aggregate. If you want the entire thing covered in gravel, it's fine by me, it's not gonna go aways.
At least keep them onto that driveway and have a parking spot.
Would be ideal, cuz anything we can get out there for parking, we can move our stuff, Eric's EMS, we can get that back there in more of a storage area, at least for those events, and you can have more parking even if it's right up there in the immediate area, so.
You have 340,000 in capital improvement. In fund, just in fund balance.
That isn't earmarked for anything, yeah?
40,000 work, or do you wanna go to 50? It's, I mean, we're already knocking, we're already lining projects up.
Yeah, I, I told Todd, I, you know, I thought it was a good idea, I'm glad they brought it forward to us and he could run it by the board for a.
If Mark Saban was available, he'd be, he doesn't know that much of this yet, so he'll be overjoyed uh, cuz their budget couldn't really afford even the product for this, so he'll be, and again, that'll be money they'll be coming back to you.
Did we turn them down at the CAC?
But they were asking for it.
So, we gave them 10,000 already?
Yep, because we worked to kinda design a project that would fit just the design side of it inside of their budget, so.
And you're gonna, you're gonna do the work for them as the drain commissioner?
I don't think that's gonna work, I kinda checked into some of the legal side, right now, I'm just helping as a.
So, you're just gonna take, you're just gonna take it and dump it in their parking lot or?
I'm gonna take it and dump it out here in our parking lot and hopefully their project gets designed and built yet this year and we can haul the stuff over there. I'm gonna try to help where I can, I don't, I'm a little bit concerned about me helping as the drain commission with drain commission staff on that. There's some sticky points about that. If they were not a separately funded entity and they were a public funded entity, I think we can get away with it. And that's where the road commission kinda stops too, I think Nate could speak to that, that you really, outside of that, if they receive funding from someplace else, it's kinda difficult.
I agree with that, well, at least we'll get that five grand back, I guess, I don't know. I would, uh, make, make a motion to allow the drain commissioner to spend up to $50,000 to acquire gravel and store it for projects needed as necessary.
Support. It's been moved and supported discussion. Anything about that motion sound not consistent with what you're asking for?
As long as you understand that a portion of that project is going to have to be placed to build a parking lot out there cuz we cannot store that without expanding the parking lot.
But you're just doing all that.
But I'll do all that, that I can do myself.
That would be a project as needed.
As long as you know it's as needed.
Is it needed?
It's needed.
There you go.
Perfect.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for hanging in there with us. Old business, item one, we have a closed session to review, uh, communication from our attorney.
Moved to go into closed session.
Been moved and supported to go into closed session for, what's the wording?
Uh, review of attorney-client privilege communication.
Is that the, I know, that's what we had on the agenda last time, is that the official?
Yeah.
Okay.